Good evening, welcome to the December 1st, 2010 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a foreign presence, so I'll call the meeting to order at this time. Before we start on our regular agenda, I want to recognize a person in the audience tonight, Mr. Ashton Paxton. He's with Troop 398. He's working on a merit badge and has to attend a meeting like this, so Ashton, where are you? Stand up Ashton. Thank you, ma'am. You picked a good one to come to, Ashton. Moving right on into our first segment on our agenda tonight is the public hearings. We have two public hearings scheduled this evening, the first of which is a zoning request, zoning change request, to amend the 15-point acre portion of Emerald Place PUD, a total of 27.35 acres, and rename the portion to the development to Copperfield, located along Lascasis Pike HDK Partners this afternoon. Ms. Ealy, good evening.
Thank you Chairman Lamb. Good evening, and good evening to you Planning Commission members. The first public hearing this evening is to consider a zoning amendment. The zoning amendment is for property located west of Lascasis Pike, just south of the villages of Garrison Cove. The property is identified on blue in the maps that you have in your packages and the map that's going to be pulled up on the screen. The total area is 27.35 acres, and the area for which a request has been made to amend the plan consists of 15.8 acres, and if you look at the map, the entire area is shaded blue, and the hatched area shows the 15.8 acres which a change has been requested. The property is Zoned PUD, Plan Unit District, and there's a plan that was approved, and that specific plan has become the zoning for the property. To make any significant changes, the applicants have to come back before you and before the city council to get any sort of major changes approved. The properties to the north are Zoned RZ, which is Zero Lot Line Residential, and is the location of the villages of Garrison Cove. The properties to the south are Zoned CF, which is our commercial fringe district, and there's a grocery store and some restaurants and some various other commercial uses located on that corner of Northfield Boulevard. Across the street or along the eastern side of the property is Highway 96, and just across Highway 96 is the Garrison Cove Single Family Subdivision, Zoned RS-12, and to the south is the Kroger Shopping Center Zone, PCD. The PUD zone currently permits a mixed-use type development with some self-storage facilities with some commercial aspect and with an area which allows 61 condominium units. The area that allows the 61 condominium units is what the applicant's requesting to be amended, the hatched area. The proposed change is to amend the PUD to replace those 61 condominiums with 240-unit multifamily apartment complexes. There'll be a presentation by the applicant just after my introduction to give you specifics on the plan. The applicants did hold a neighborhood meeting, which I think was well-attended by some of interested people in the neighborhood and by staff. Mr. Kevin Gunther's here this evening, and he has the team with him who I think will make introductions and go through a presentation of what the request is. Staff will be available to answer questions you have either before or after the public hearing.
Mr. Gunther?
Thank you, Ms. Ealy, and thank you Chairman Lamb and Planning Commission. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. We'd like to present to you the Copperfield project. We do have a team assembled here this evening that's been working hard on this project. The developer is here, Mr. Bobby Kirby. He will be speaking regarding some of the project issues. Also, Mr. Jewel Hale and Mr. Stephen Dotson. Mr. Bernie Weinstein is here representing architecture, and Mr. Bill Hodelsen is here representing civil engineering issues. So what I'd like to do this evening is start by walking you through some of the design issues, and then Mr. Bobby Kirby is going to address you as it relates to some of the project issues for the actual change in the market and why we are proposing this project in market conditions. We've been working hard on this project. We feel this represents a quality project. We feel this represents a project that has been adjusted to fit into the community. And what you see, this first image on the screen, is an image of how this would interlay with the surrounding community and also with the proposed commercial development that is to remain unchanged. The portion of Emerald Place that you see to the south that is commercial, that would remain in place unchanged. All the architectural standards, all the design standards that we've worked hard to put in place for that would not change. What we would like to change is the 15.8 acres to the north of that into apartments. And there are times that apartments can act as a transition, and we feel that this is one of those cases, as you're moving from the commercial into a multifamily and then into residential. The image you see now is the plan as it stands, the existing plan before this proposal. So we have the 61 condominium units to the north, and then the commercial portion to the south. This illustration is what we'd like to do with Copperfield. As I said, we've been working hard on the design, and we've been working very hard to integrate this project into its surroundings. And I'd like to walk through some of those specifics of the design with this illustration. For one thing, we've set the, any kind of building units back 200 feet from Highway 96. One of the best ways to transition multifamily in with the surroundings is distance, and that's what we've done in this project. We've given at least 200 feet from Highway 96 to that first building that you interface with as you approach the project. We've also made that first building a very nice building. We've made that building the clubhouse and the surrounding landscape. So that's the focal point. That's the first thing you see as you come in off of Highway 96. The other thing that we've done is we've given distance from the surrounding adjoining properties to the core of our project. We've given at least 100 feet from the units on the north, and we've created two-story buildings to face the closer residential projects to us, the single family, and taken the three-story buildings, put them at the core of the project, and then also put them more related to the commercial side of the project. We've provided at least 44 percent open space with the project, and we've also provided pocket parks and playgrounds. This is important. One of the things that the developer made very clear to us and to the city staff is they want to make this a quality project, and they are targeting this project for young professionals, for young families, empty nesters, and one of the ways to do that is to provide amenities and equality of the project that they're putting forth. Another thing that we've done is created, as I said, a focal point as you come in, the clubhouse. There's a very large-scale pool with amenities that is going to serve the community, and we've worked very hard on landscaping around the perimeter. This is very important. We're, as I said, distance is one key component, making sure that we pull back all the larger buildings at good distance from the perimeter, and we're also providing a Type C landscape buffer, which is the densest type of landscape buffer in this case between these two, between residential and multifamily. This image is what you will see from Highway 96 if you were passing by before you'd make a left turn into the project. And as you can see, what we've done is we've worked very hard at giving this a residential feeling. And the clubhouse is what you see on the left. There'd be an entrance bridge that would be covered with stone veneer on the right, and then we enveloped the front of this project with landscape along with the mail kiosk with an architectural style that matches the buildings. And you create a screen, you create a veil, in addition to the distance as you front the project. One of the things that was mentioned previously as we were looking at this project is trying to come up with a way to communicate the distance between the perimeter and exactly how we've established these buildings. And if I could walk you through, this is from the north end to the south end of the project, on the far right of your screen would be where our landscape buffer is, our Type C landscape buffer. Well, we've added something to that. We've created carports, and I'm not talking about open-air carports, I'm talking about carports that are going to match the architectural style of the building. So they'd be clad with hardy plank, and those are combined with our Type C landscape buffer to create one of the best barriers that you can get to sound and vision, which is an actual structure, and then placing the evergreen trees behind that. So that's the first thing you would come as you cross the property line. Then we've got more than 100 feet if you were to walk through the parking lot towards the center of the site from the right to the left of this image, and you come across a two-story building. Now, the two-story building does have patios on the second floor, and we do have, you know, those outdoor patios, but what I'd like to point out is that in no way could you see into adjoining residential properties with this design, because not only do we have distance, we have those additional trees, we have the carports, and what you would have is you would have a veil between anybody who's up in a second or third-story patio would not have views into the surrounding neighborhood. Likewise, the surrounding neighborhood would not have views directly up into those patios. At the center of this section view, you would walk into the pocket park where we're proposing to have grills and picnic tables, and here again, we feel that a key way to provide a quality project and get the right tenants in this apartment project is to provide amenities that would draw them. And you reach the three-story building, and as you can see, that is the furthest distance from the right side of this image is where the residential properties are to the north. Then you would have the opportunity to walk through that parking lot and connect with commercial by sidewalk pedestrian connection. We do want to connect this project with the commercial site, and we've provided that pedestrian connection. As for architecture, we've spent a lot of time looking at that and trying to, once again, get a residential feel, take the scale down, break up the mass of some of these buildings so that they feel comfortable. And we are committing to all hardy plank and brick. There is no vinyl proposed on these buildings. We're providing, there are some accent features such as decorative rails, light fixtures, shutters, bronze-colored accent around the windows, and these types of things really speak not only to the quality of the architecture, but I think to a more friendly and more comfortable scale to the building. And I'll just finish with this image. This is the clubhouse, as you would see it from Highway 96, and once again, we've carried those same very comfortable scaled elements of design into the clubhouse with some copper accent pieces, shutters on the windows, as we would also have shutters on the windows on the larger buildings, and we brought that type of scale through the whole project. So that summarizes some of the design issues as we have prepared it in your pocket. I also want to mention, we did have the neighborhood meeting on the 16th, and it was a good dialogue. We appreciated that opportunity. There were some things as it related to design that came up in that meeting, and speaking with the development team, we're prepared to commit to some changes in response to the neighborhood. One of those things was a fence line along the commercial, and, I'm sorry, a fence line along the residential. That would be some type of chain-link fence with a PVC, a black coating, so that you wouldn't, it wouldn't be highly visible, but it would provide security. We've also committed to additional birmingham. We think we can work some more birmingham in the front of the project from Highway 96. There was also a good suggestion about one of the buildings, that if you look at the illustration plan, Building D1 is currently proposed as a three-story building. And if we transition that into a two-story building, which we're prepared to do, bringing the unit count down to 232, what that would mean is that both of the buildings off of Highway 96 would be two-story buildings. We thought that was a very valid design suggestion from the neighborhood, and we're prepared to make that a condition of the project. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bobby Kirby and let him speak to you some
Good evening Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission and city staff. I'm Bobby Kirby, and I'm one of the developers of the proposed zoning amendment. The reason for our request is due simply to economics, the unfortunate recession and the changing world that we've all experienced locally here in Murfreesboro over the past few years. Since 2007, when our PUD was first approved, we have seen the bottom fall out of residential real estate, out of the residential condo real estate market. We have met and discussed our development with many local residential real estate brokers as well as residential developers. We have been strongly advised that a condo project would simply fail and would not be a successful development. According to the Rutherford County Board of Realtors and the MLS, there were 195 new condos sold and closed in 2007 when we began this project. That number dropped to 137 new condos in 2008. That number of sold condos dropped again in 2009 to only 87. And so far, in 2010, there have only been 43 condos to sell in the city of Murfreesboro. There are currently 200 residential condos and townhomes on the market in Murfreesboro, which represents approximately four years' worth of inventory. The demand for an upscale apartment complex in the city of Murfreesboro is much greater today than it was in 2007, and that demand is increasing. The demand for condos has steadily decreased. We believe a condo project will fail. We believe a quality upscale apartment development will be successful. We take pride in being good neighbors, good citizens, and good local developers. We're simply trying to face the changing world we live in and the unfortunate economic times we have all seen and experienced over the past few years. We respectfully request your consideration for our zoning amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby. Mr. Hale or anybody else for the development?
Chairman Lamb and the members of the Planning Commission. I'm Jean Meredith Klein. I'm the owner and principal broker for Management Marketing Concepts. If approved, we've been selected to be the management agent for the proposed project. Currently, we manage 1,750 units and have approximately 45 employees representing local investors throughout Rutherford County. By limiting our focus, we've been successful in recruiting and training a staff of professionals as well as a base of subcontractors and suppliers. This puts us in a great position to provide outstanding customer service and with that, a reputation of building communities that are well-kept, clean, as safe and secure as possible, and an asset to the city. St. Andrews Apartments, our most recent development, which is now five years old, has won the coveted Ruthie's Award consecutively for the last two years. The property does not have many of the luxury amenities of its competitors, but it is well-known to have friendly, responsive onsite staff. The rent schedule for our proposed development should speak for itself as to the desirability and uniqueness in its marketplace. Our one-bedrooms will be in the 800 price range, and our threes will be over $1,000 a month. Our resident selection criteria in rental application require household income to be three to four times the rent amount, thus requiring more than a $50,000 yearly income to qualify for a three-bedroom, $45,000 for a two, and $35,000 to $40,000 for a one-bedroom. A criminal background check is completed on all applicants, and anyone with a felony or unsatisfactory rental history would be declined. There is nothing to compare this project to in this submarket. The majority of the product within a three-mile radius is older product, having been built from 1978 to 1986. Their one-bedrooms start in the 400 price range, and their three-bedrooms top out in the 799 price range. What we have, what we have here, and it's a little bit hard for you to see, but you have I-24, and you have the proposed property up on the top right, and everything that has been built in the last five years in a Class A-type property is located on the west and the south side of town. There's about 2,500 to 3,000 units that have been built in the last five years on that side of town where you have all the malls, all the shopping, and traffic counts over there off of 96, I think, are about 25,000. And then on this side of 96, in front of the proposed project, the traffic count is about 12,000. And of course, 12,000 is not exactly what you have on a neighborhood street. In summary, the one-bedroom rent at Copperfield is the high rent in the market, in that market for a three-bedroom. Our prices and our screening criteria will make it difficult for people such as undergraduate students to qualify. Our products should not be compared to the Section 8, bond-issue, or income-restricted housing that is available. We address needs. Multifamily rental housing is important because it meets the housing needs of a range of different types of households, from those who simply find renting more convenient to those unprepared to take on the risk of homeownership, those moving for job opportunity, those just moving to an area or planning to move again soon, to those who seek the services that are more economically provided in higher-density settings such as seniors and others with disabilities, rental housing is a crucial option. As the largest generation of children in the history of the U.S. reach adulthood from 2000 to 2020, the 70 million Echo Boomers, estimates for this group project the number-seeking rental housing will grow by 13 percent or around 4.5 million by 2015. Also to be considered is the number of seniors, the 78 million Baby Boomers, who are beginning to consider downsizing their households. Homeownership is potentially out of reach for nearly a third of Americans. Consumer confidence reflects fear from would-be homebuyers. They're still afraid they're going to lose their jobs. They are afraid they may need to use the money they've saved to live on, so they don't have to put it into a down payment. Fully 69 percent of people ages 18 to 49 have lost ground during the Great Recession. It's likely that these people, who are the most likely first-time and move-up homebuyers, took a hit to their credit scores. Their data indicate that even if they've recovered from the worst, they may not be able to get a mortgage, and if they do, they are also more likely to face higher down payments and interest rates. Homeownership rates that may drop from 67 percent to 62 percent over the next three years would send between 4 and 5 million people back to the renter pool. Our local market, Rutherford County, received national recognition when the population of the county reached 100,000 approximately 13 years ago. That was when the first wave of development began. Now the city itself is nearing 100,000, with the county population reaching two-and-a-half times that number. One only has to count the new stoplights that have gone up on Memorial Boulevard from Heritage Park Drive, the airport, Osborne Lane, Thompson Lane, Cherry Lane, all the way to Walter Hill, noting new banks and pharmacies on virtually every corner to be sure that growth is already at your door. New schools, new churches, new grocery stores have been built to serve the need. Six of the major employers for the county are in the immediate neighborhood. Student-oriented housing, the dormitory-style apartments, have totaled about 5,500 beds that have been built near MTSU to serve the student population. What is lacking is a housing choice and a new upscale apartment community for the north side of Murfreesboro. Neighbors are much more likely to support a project when they understand that the residents are people very similar to themselves. In all probability, it will be your local police officers, firefighters, or teachers whose salaries make rental housing an attractive option. The north side of Murfreesboro has become a very desirable site of town to live on. It has less traffic. It has the newest schools. The Sequel Recreation Complex and the Sportscom with new water feature are all great attributes to the north side. With apartments having less impact on schools, community services, and traffic in subdivisions, they are actually more physically prudent than traditional suburban sprawl. And while well-designed and appropriate to the community, they can even enhance property values. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Gunther, does that complete your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Before I open the public hearing, let me go over a few things. First of all, the purpose of this meeting is to conduct a public hearing. The developer has made a request to the city of Murfreesboro. It's our job to conduct a public hearing to hear from the residents or anybody else in the city that would like to speak either for or against the proposal. At the conclusion of that public hearing, the meeting will be closed, and then we will conduct a vote, and we will make a recommendation to the city council whether to accept or reject this proposal. When we open the public hearing, I'd like to ask anybody interested in speaking to come forward to the microphone, clearly state your name and give your address if you would, please, and then limit your comments to no more than three minutes if at all possible. We have quite a few people here tonight that would like to speak, and I'm sure a lot of the comments will probably be very similar. So try to limit your comments to no more than three minutes if you would, so everybody will have an opportunity to get up and speak if they so choose to do so. Make all your questions toward the Planning Commission. Members of our staff will make note of your questions, and at the conclusion of the public hearing, they will attempt to answer those questions. Any comments or applause or anything from the audience during the presentation would be inappropriate, so please refrain from that. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Chairman Lamb, Vice Chairman Young, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Diane Gower, and I live at 2130 Lovelace Lane. I would like to read for the record an email that my husband Mike and I sent to each Commission member yesterday. It says, "Dear Planning Commission members, At Wednesday's commission meeting, a request for a zoning change will be presented by HDK developers for their property that adjoins the single-family homes of villages of Garrison, Garrison Cove, Lovelace Lane, Pitts Lane, and homes surrounding Oakland High School. The proposal is to change from their current plan of 61 homeowners condominiums and townhomes to a proposed 240 apartment units. Mike and I attended a neighborhood meeting hosted by HDK on November 16th, which was well-attended by the area homeowners. All homeowners speaking at this meeting were against the zoning change. The main reasons for opposition included things like the traffic issues in an already dense area, estimated additional 700-plus vehicles with the apartments, and maintaining the quality and residential integrity of the area with homeowners instead of transient renters like we get with the apartments. We first heard of the project at that meeting, and since then, we've done some research, and we offer the following thoughts for your consideration. HDK's proposed planned development for apartments is surrounded by hundreds of single-family households, whereby homeowners have a major investment in their homes. Since we moved to Murfreesboro 10 years ago, we've been most impressed with the long-range planning by the city, Joseph Adalot and his staff, to protect the integrity of neighborhoods and businesses. Murfreesboro is years ahead of cities where we have lived previously, which includes Nashville, Brentwood, and Knoxville, and it does a considerably better job with planning and governing to maintain a quality environment for all of us. Since the proposed zoning change by HDK is essentially a short-term fix, then it's not consistent with this long-range planning. The current zoning plan, which calls for 60 homeowner condominiums or townhomes, was approved in 2007. Although the neighbors at that time would have preferred to keep single-family zoning, the current zoning is acceptable for protecting the long-range residential integrity for this area. Now that the economy has taken a downturn, the market for condominium homes is not attractive. So it would seem that the developers are looking for a short-term fix, and thus the proposal of the apartments. All of us in Murfreesboro are trying to be patient as we wait for the economy to bounce back. I hope that we can expect that same patience from this development group, our city planners, and the commission. The long-term quality of the life of hundreds of homeowners and property tax- The long-term quality of the life of hundreds of homeowners and property taxpayers will be negatively impacted by a short-term change that benefits a small number of developers. It just doesn't seem right. So I would ask you to consider the long-range best interest of these citizens and deny their zoning request. And I appreciate your service to the city, and I appreciate your consideration of this request."
Thank you, Mrs. Gower. Who would like to be next?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Gary McGuire. My address is, sorry, two-one-three-five Lovelace Lane. I'm not going to repeat the things that Diane and Mike said, because they're all quite clear. I will bring one important point to bear. I called this morning to the Murfreesboro City Schools and to Pittard Elementary specifically. They have a capacity of one thousand and twenty students. Their current enrollment is nine-hundred-and-fifty. I suspect that seventy will be reached with normal growth by the next year. So our addition of this new development, we have no place to put those kids at the moment. But I would also like to address, as Diane did, the concept of the integrity of the neighborhood. The entire area is completely surrounded by single-family homes. We were asked as a group to compromise, and did, to get homeowners into the area, and now they've changed that. Now, what I would like to say is, I don't feel like there are any evil people here. HDK is not some sort of Batman evil character out there trying to do something. They, like all businesses, are trying to make money for their investors with their investments, and I appreciate that. But they, like us, hopefully will need to wait and hold on. There are people in our area who have needed or wanted to move and sell their homes, and if they did, they would do so at a loss because of our economy. We just have to wait, and we'd like to ask them to do the same thing, to wait until the economy picks up and then maintain the integrity of the neighborhood in which we're all invested and all love. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire.
Chairman Lamb, members of the zoning commission, Joe Stadelot. My name is Jim Jones. I live at twenty-two oh-three Garrison Cove. Bob, it seems like we do this quite frequently, don't we? The last one of these meetings that I attended, you actually gave us a compliment. You told us that we were the poster children for Murfreesboro as far as compromise is concerned. That was with Kroger's. Frankly, I've looked every which way but loose to figure out a way to form a compromise with this. There was a compromise, sixty-one units. We have traffic problems coming out of Garrison Cove, coming out of the Villages of Garrison Cove, at Rutherford Boulevard, and Last Cassis, as it is now. To put two-hundred and now thirty-two units across the street from us just doesn't make sense. It just doesn't fit. I kind of go back, and I'm going to make it a little bit different than what the late Johnny Cochran said, you know, "If it don't fit, you must acquit." Well, if it don't fit, you must quit, you know? It don't fit, you know? And my dad, many years ago, said to me, you know, "You can put a..." You can put, and I'll use, these weren't his terminology, but you can put Jimmy Choi's shoes, you can put a Versace dress, and the fanciest lipstick you want on a pig. When it comes right down to it, it's still a pig. So, I mean, I'm trying to just get across the point that it doesn't fit. I'm a senior citizen, okay? I'm sixty-three years old. I'm not going to live in a two-story or a three-story apartment or condominium. I'm going one floor, okay? The other side of that is eight-hundred, nine-hundred to a thousand-dollar rent. If the economy's that bad, people aren't going to pay that. I looked into the apartments in Rutherford County and in Murfreesboro. Everything that I could ascertain from everybody I could talk to, and I'm not, this is not an accurate deal, there's about thirty-five percent unoccupancy in apartments in Rutherford County. There's also approximately fifteen-hundred-and-four single-family dwellings under two-hundred-thousand on the market for sale. The reason I bring that under two-hundred-thousand is these become potential rentals for people. If I move out of town and I can't sell my house, I certainly can rent it while somebody can make the note for me. So those are potential, too. We go up and down Last Cassis Highway, go up and down Rutherford Boulevard, go up and down Case and Lane, go all over the place. Look in your newspaper. What you see is move in for two-hundred-ninety-nine dollars, three months free rent, you know? We'll give you a big-screen TV and a three-month free rent if you'll move in. Now, I can sit and talk all day long about having an upscale community, and quite frankly, that's beautiful. But the reality of the thing is, is once you build it and they don't come, then you're going to do what you have to do to fill it. That's what scares us. The problems that we have with this project are, first of all, traffic count. Last Cassis Highway, the state's got no money. They're not going to widen that road anytime soon. You have us, you have the villages, we have all the schools up and down the other side, including Oakland High School, all feed into that. You have Kroger's, you have Food Line, you have Alteen Million Apartments down the other side of Last Cassis. All of this converge on this area, and it's a bottleneck. It's just not working, and to add to that bottleneck just doesn't make sense. Finally, you know, I own a business, Mr. Lamb, you own a business, Mr. Young, you have a business, Mr. Clark, you have an insurance agency. I feel sorry for you. I used to have one myself. You know, these are hard times, and I own a business, and I've had to do different things to make my business work. One of the things is, you know, you do better than the other guy did, you know? There are people who bought condominiums and townhouses, you know? They sold, forty of them, whatever it is. So, I mean, if you do a better job at that than the next guy did, maybe you'll sell it, you know? Mr. Clark, sometimes your insurance rates are higher than other people's, but you still sell insurance. You know, sometimes, Mr. Young, your carpet is higher than other people's is, and you have to sell, you have to do a better job selling. Finally, I think it's unanimous within our community that we don't want this project, not because they're not nice people, but because it just doesn't fit with what we want to do. And as a sidelight, Garrison Cove did win a roofie as the best subdivision at one point. Thank you.
Counselman, Chairman Bob, Lamb. My name is Len Norris. Residence is two-four oh-four Pitts Lane. My father owned the property prior to me owning it, owned it for approximately twenty, twenty-five years. So my speaking is somewhat in the shadow of what he would think, and also of my very dear and good friend and neighbors, to the left and right and down Pitts Lane. Mr. Kirby, I'd like to thank you very much for speaking the exact truth, and that truth is, it's the economic conditions. If I owned that property, and I'd gone out with a lot of money of my own and my investors to do a condominium process or procedure for it and got it through, I'd be happy. The sad case and events are the fact that our economy has changed. So how do I make this economic now downfall, instead of a windfall, pay for me? The only way to do it is to put more bodies in place. So I can understand the short-term viewpoint, especially if you've got a note to do at the bank, that we've got to get something going, and we've got to do it quickly. We have to do it in a manner of which we can possibly get past the residents as well as the zoning commission. So the point being made was economic. What's the best and highest use, short-term, for the property? To get this thing off of my back and get it to generating some income, and that is to turn it into multifamily. Makes perfect sense to me, but as far as the community's concerned, from a long-term standpoint, it doesn't really work. I think the main reason is the traffic scenario, the school scenario. Today at four-fifteen, I was at the Kroger's, which is located on Last Cassis, trying to get across the road to take a left. I had to go right, pull in, and come back, and that has not really changed a bit. As far as the tenants, as we heard from our learned multifamily residential individual, we're looking at professionals. Wow. Let's say we've got a school of twenty-three, twenty-eight thousand people, and I wouldn't quite call them professionals yet, but they need a place to live. FICO score is around four-seventy-five compared to the residents. I don't think I've seen, not to brag, a FICO score of four-seventy-five since I drew breath and started making money, and I don't think any of my neighbors are in that particular situation myself. Retirement, well said. Two-story, uh-uh. Ain't going to have it. Me, I'm sixty-four, loving it, going on thirty-eight. You can put me into a single floor. So, given that, just from the economic standpoint, I understand where you're coming from. Shoot, I'd be trying to do the same thing myself. You can't pull wool over these people's eyes, especially from the long standpoint. We all are going through this phase of, would I like to sell it at a premium price and put in another Mirabella? Absolutely. Ain't going to happen anytime soon. So myself personally, I would say, stick to your condos, ride out the horse friends, because I think that's probably, I know that would be the best way to go. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Yes, sir.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Sean Dangerfield, and I'm here on representative of Villages of Garrison Cove, me and my neighbors. I live at twenty-five hundred Oak Hill Drive, and what I, my standpoint comes from a father. I've got children who go to the local city schools, and I moved from Foster Avenue, which is downtown Nashville, basically off Fester's Lane. And the reason I moved to this side of Murfreesboro was for the reason that we're living in right now, because of the single housing, you know, family houses. And I think, you know, there are good investments, and I think there are bad investments. And I think what's happened here in this situation is somebody's made a bad investment in some bad times, and they're trying to ride it out on the backs of people who have made long-term investments and who are looking into the future for things and not for a quick fix. I'm a proud homeowner. This is the second house I've ever owned, me and my wife, my two kids. We love my neighborhood, and I'm looking more into the future of the schooling. You know, the schools are almost full as it is, and we go there, you know, all the time, and it's an hour just to get my kid around a horseshoe in front of the school because there are so many cars and vehicles. I can't even let my kids walk up and down the street as it is right now, having to jump out in front of vehicles to keep them from hitting them. So I think, you know, on behalf of parents and just families that are there to ride out twenty years from now, that are grounded, that are not just there for the next, you know, twelve-month lease or six-month lease, I don't think it's the right thing to do for us. And I think there was a reason why there's not apartments on that side of town. There's a real big reason for it. There's a reason why it's all on that side of town, and the reason being is because that's where the houses are, and that's the way we would like to keep it. So I appreciate you letting me speak and hope you consider it.
Yes, sir. Thanks for speaking.
Hello. My name is Wayne Murphy. I live at twenty-three seventy-one Pitts Lane, and to be perfectly honest with you, my wife is the public speaker of the family, but unfortunately for me, she couldn't be here tonight. So here I am, but I wanted to offer a little bit of a historical perspective on this. Back when a decision was trying to be made regarding the area where the Food Line currently resides, there was a proposal at that time to build multifamily dwelling at that property, and that was defeated at that time. And as a matter of fact, it is my recollection that a new Office General zoning designation was even created then to give the homeowners around that area some reassurance that there would not be multifamily dwellings placed in that area and to protect us, specifically being the area north of Northfield Boulevard and, I guess, at that west of Last Cassis Pike. So I did want to bring that to your attention. As has been previously stated, I guess it's been about three years ago, when the developer came to the homeowners in the area, Mr. Adalot strongly recommended to us that we not just try to veto everything that was proposed, but that we compromise. We feel that we did that. That's when the Emerald Place condominium development was proposed. We all agreed to that. The developers, the homeowners, the Planning Commission all agreed, and we feel like, as homeowners, we have your word to that agreement, and we just hope you keep your word. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire.
Hi, my name is Aaron Ritchie. I live at two-five-two-one Kill Kenny Court in the Villages of Garrison Cove. When I did a little research on this project, I thought I'd reference the material, the guidelines, that the zoning boards had to follow. So that was my first point of research, and I stopped on the very first page because there was comments that really struck me. It said, on the very first page of the Murfreesboro zoning ordinance, "The purpose of the board is to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Murfreesboro." So we need to ask ourselves, how does this Copperfield apartment complex fit into that? It is a hundred-and-fifty percent larger than the Villages of Garrison Cove adjacent to it. They're increasing this project three-hundred-and-ninety-three percent from what we've already negotiated. They're adding to the traffic approximately twenty percent more cars. They did a traffic study but did not include the numbers tonight. I'm basing my numbers upon what we heard earlier, the twelve thousand. So going to your information, your guidelines, promoting the health, safety, and welfare of the residents in Murfreesboro, by lessening and preventing congestion in public streets. No, it does not do that. Secure the safety of fire and other dangers, avoids concentrations of populations? Nope, it's going to add to it even worse. Encourages the distribution of populations? Nope. And such classifications of land uses, as well intend to facilitate and preserve adequate provisions for transportation, water supply, drainage, sanitation, education opportunities, and recreation. I'm hearing a lot of no's on that one. Page number two of the Murfreesboro City Code states that it prohibits the use of buildings or structures incompatible with the characteristics of the established districts. By putting an apartment complex completely squarely in the middle of two well-established, well-established neighborhoods, it's incompatible with the characteristics of our district. The planned development zoning alternative allows for the innovation for a developer while assuming the maximum amount of protection for the while assuming the maximum amount of protection for the adjoining property owners. Doesn't sound like my property is being protected at all. I think that my property values are definitely going to go down. You should also consider the minimum requirements for the promotion of the public health, safety, comfort, morals, and general welfare. Page number two. Looks like our morals are having all of us come together to fight this project. So based upon the facts and the statistics going on here, this project is not fitting in and should be denied. A couple of points I wanted to bring up. Ambient lighting in the neighborhood is going to flood into homes. Whether we can see into their complexes or they can see into ours, ambient lighting's going to affect us. A water boosting station is going to be needed. If you're going to increase that area, our water supply, our water pressure's going to decrease because they're increasing the area. Sewer lines therefore will be needed. Assuming their numbers of 240, mixed between two and three bedrooms, couple one-bedrooms in there, I'm sure, assuming that everybody has a car per bedroom, most renters are most people, will do that. That bridge is nowhere near significantly wide enough to handle that traffic. They'll probably need another one to go in there. So I'm sure we're talking environmental issues with water runoff. You saw the original plan. There was so much green space. They're talking about 40% open use. Well, if you count concrete as open use for kids to play basketball, yeah, that's accurate. We are losing a lot of green space. That's going to provide an environmental and a drainage issue. Already, our culvert that runs around Last Cassis fills up on the lightest trickle. You're going to add that much more concrete, it's really going to provide a downstream issue. The turn lanes are in conflict. You've heard about that. I'm sure the state's not going to come in and put a stoplight at that intersection. So we've got multiple reasons why this project should be denied and ridden out, just like the rest of us homeowners who originally compromised on this project. So I'm just referencing the guidelines that you're following as well and why this project should be denied and kept the original negotiated compromised agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ritchie. Anybody else? Let me remind you, please make all of your comments toward the planning commission and the staff so we can make note of it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Leslie Dodd Carl. I live at 2553 Pitts Lane. I'm here on behalf of several Pitts Lane residents and also some residents of Bear Branch Cove. I appreciate what the developers have done. They've obviously put a lot of work into this project, and it does look nice, but the facts are that it's 240 units as opposed to 61. There are a lot of apartments west of our 24, but the highest concentration of real units in the city is in the northeast quadrant bordered by East Main, Rutherford, Northfield, and depending on whether you use Middle Tennessee Boulevard or Memorial, that number increases exponentially. I support everything that everyone has said tonight. I particularly appreciate Dr. Murphy reminding us about the establishment of the office general zoning, which happened a number of years ago. And also, I wanted to make a comment about the fact that zoning amendments are not appropriate instruments to address an economic downturn, and I respectfully submit that it wouldn't be good planning, and I think you all do try to do good planning. So that's one comment that I think hasn't been mentioned tonight that I wanted to say. So, thank you.
I can miss Carl. Anybody else?
Thank you, Committee. My name is Matt Fogley. I live on Creek Walk Drive in Garrison Cove. Just wanted to augment a couple observations made tonight regarding the schools. I called the city schools this morning. John Pitter is at 954, max capacity, what is it, 1,020? Oakland Middle School, the new one, is at 974, max capacity 1,000. Going from 61 units to 240 units would obviously increase the amount of children going to these schools. I don't know the cap at Oakland, but Oakland's at 1,789. I'm not sure what the cap is there. I'd also like to point out, on page two of the Copperfield proposal, under the planned residential development criteria, item number 12, it states that Highway 96 adjacent to the site is depicted as a five-lane thoroughfare. That is not five lanes. It is one lane this way, one lane that way with a turning lane. I can no longer leave the front of Garrison Cove because it's really backed up in the morning. So we go out the back way off of Higgins, which puts us near apartments there. Those apartments, as many residents of Garrison Cove know, caused a lot of, there was a lot of break-ins and robberies, which you can check with the police department. Actually had us call a neighborhood watch meeting when I first moved here about two and a half years ago because of the amount of traffic and opportunistic break-ins and removal of materials from people's homes. Not that that's the case with this clientele, but something to be considered for the folks out of the Villages of Garrison Cove who are backed up to this dwelling. And I think that's my two. Additionally, just the need for apartments. I did a quick Google map search, which I'll gladly submit, just pointing out in a quick vicinity apartments in, within a close proximity to this, which is the proposed dwelling. And as we, excuse me, as we see there's a number, all these red dots are available rentals as I do an apartment rental search. So this is MTSU. This is where the site is. So I apologize to this if you'd like me to leave this. I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Hello, Chairman Lamb and Committee. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd like to, first of all, echo everything that's been said.
Excuse me, sir. For the record, would you give your name?
Um, Bubba Skinnerd. My name is Carl P. Mayfield. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. We just have to ask.
I'm new at speaking. I live at 2390 Pitts Lane and have for 25 years. I haven't been sleeping lately. This just kills me to think of all these wonderful people and the homes and the area that's kept so nicely compared to other areas of the borough. Catchphrase I created. Thank you very much. And promoted on the radio, Middle Tennessee, and sometimes nationally for more than 40 years. So I love this community. I love these people. This is a wonderful place to live. I think this is going to bring, God forbid that you pass it, a new element that this gentleman spoke of. That is a lot of money to get into a apartment complex. I think the lower end, 800 bucks, and they're going to have to fill them somehow. And I think we're going to see apartments filled with day laborers, you know, stacked up like yard dogs, and jumping into 18, 20 of these day laborers into cars. One of 500 and something probably parked out there in my backyard. What is my backyard currently? I even, in an attempt to stop some of this, at least 15-point acres of it, the Copperfield deal, I checked with the people who do the tax assessing, and that 15-point acres is currently assessed at $177,000. Offered to buy it today. How much they want it? The goal of the development group for Copperfield is to create a community-oriented project that uplifts the resident. They want to uplift me and put it up in me, is what they want to do. And Copperfield, 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 I wish to God David Copperfield were here and not me, and make this thing, with all due respect, disappear, but keep this wonderful pal. Thank you for serving the community, and thanks for allowing me to speak. How you doing, man?
Thank you, Mr. Skinnerd. I mean, Mr. Mayfield. I hate to ask this, but would anybody like to follow that? Should have known. I should have known.
Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission, I'm Becky Mayfield. I live at 2390 Pitts Lane with him. And the only thing I've got to talk about is everything that everybody else has talked about, but the chain link fence bothers me because we own two properties in Wellington, which is off of Northfield, where all the white fencing is. Well, there's chain link fencing behind my houses over there, and I have replaced it, I can't tell you how many times, because the people in the apartments behind us have just chopped it down, and that's what we do on a regular basis. I have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. They just come through kids, people.
They go to the little market.
Well, yeah, they go to the little market down the road, wherever they go, but we replace it, and that's what would happen if they put fence, chain link fence up around our house, any of those houses along there. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield.
Mr. Lamb, Chairman. I'm Bob Yates, Robert E. Yates. I live at 2340 Pitts Lane. This is in the rear of my property. My fence line is their back line. We, when we were here, I guess in 2006 or whenever, decided that we're going to do something with the property. We realized that. So the compromise was that we would have homeowners, we'd have condos, people that took pride in their property. They agreed to do single-stairred story along the outside perimeter so they wouldn't be looking in on their body. So we agreed to that. They never did start building, and I'm not sure that even this time they'll ever start building. They got it approved for the condos, couldn't market it, couldn't sell it, didn't start building, so evidently that's what they were going to do. So now we'll move it up to apartments, get 240 apartments. We probably are not going to build what we're showing. We're probably going to market it and sell it. This is their idea, I believe. But even if it's not their idea, we don't need apartments on our side of Northfield, if you want to say. That's how we thought it before. That's why we have the office general on the corner of Pitts Lane. Their idea was, we don't need apartments coming over into the residential. Let's keep them on the side of Northfield they already are. So I think basically that's what the whole neighborhood is saying. We don't need the apartments on our side of Northfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yates.
My name is Britt Mietan, and I live at 1523 Mirabella Way in the Mirabella subdivision. And I'm here with several other members, residents of Mirabella. We've just been residents of Murfreesboro for the last three years. We moved here from New Orleans, and we love Murfreesboro and we love our neighborhood, and we've been extremely impressed with how well-run the city is and how responsible city government is to the needs of its population. And I would like to just go on record, I don't have the history that many of these other speakers do here tonight in terms of the previous negotiations with the developers, but I can tell you that it's unanimous in Mirabella that we're opposed to this development. It's going to affect our quality of life. They've already, all these eloquent speakers have already spoken of the traffic issues that we deal with, and I think we're all concerned about our economy and the values of our homes, and I think this is going to negatively impact our home values, and I hope that you all, in your roles, take that into consideration as you consider this matter. Thank you very much.
Chairman Lamb, Commission members, Planning Department members, we all really do appreciate the hard work. Y'all did bring it up a little better.
Please give your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Helen Calvin, 2202 Garrison Cove. I'm the very first house on the right. Jim Jones is the very first house on the left, and we would be very, very affected by the traffic as we all would. I'm very concerned about everything that everybody here has addressed, traffic being one great one, property values being another, and on and on, and I'm not going to just regurgitate everything that everybody else has said. But as I said last night, thinking about this hearing and thinking about how I felt about it, how all of us feel about it, I did what so many of us do this day and time when we're puzzled about something and want an answer. I went to Google, and when I Googled "the purpose of planning," it said, theoretically, the primary purpose of zoning is to segregate uses that are thought to be incompatible. In practice, zoning is used to prevent new development from interfering with existing residents or businesses and to preserve, quote, and this was not my quotes but theirs, "character," end quote, of a community. So I just ask that, as y'all consider everything that's been said here tonight, that you also consider Google's definition of the purpose of zoning and planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calvin. Anybody else?
My name is Lee Shortridge. I live at 2013 Look Rock Court in Garrison Cove. Excuse me. I support very strongly everything that's been said here tonight in opposition to the plan. I also want to say I think these are respectable people who are proposing this development. What struck me as I was listening to the comments is that there are two bad words that we hear an awful lot of these days, and whether you're, regardless of what your political affiliation is, those two words are bailout, okay? Big Brother has bailed out Wall Street investment banks, they bailed out General Motors, Chrysler. There are probably hundreds or thousands of small businesses that haven't been bailed out. They had their mission statements, their objectives, and what they were trying to do, and the economy came along and rendered all of that useless, and somehow they struggled and made out. And like I said, the big boys got the bailout, and these gentlemen are the victims of a bad economy, no question about that, but I don't think it's the purpose of the Planning Commission to bail them out. And I really think that what we need to do is consider the comments made by the people who live in this area and their concerns and say, hey, that goes with the territory here, and that's why we're here as a planning commission, to listen to the people who live in the area. Yeah, we commiserate with the developers and so forth, but your mission is not to bail them out. I think it's to stand up for the people who live in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shortridge.
I'm Chairman Lamb. My name is Andrew Owusu, and I live at 2468 Oak Hill Drive, and I think what I'd like to say echoes what has already been said, but with a slightly different twist. What we're talking about are two sets of investment, the investment made by the developer and the investments made by the homeowners. And really, this discussion has to do with, well, they don't want to really lose that much, so meaning, us the homeowners are actually the ones that are going to be losing in this. But in addition to losing what I think is a loss in, a decrease in property value, we actually incur a double loss, which is the decreased quality of life, and that also has to be taken into account. And so I would urge the board to take that into account in making a decision, and I do hope that you would oppose this request.
The developers are making quite an investment in this property. And part of the process for amending a planned development is to hear what the neighbors have to say, and to try to work with them, and try to present something that they can live with, and that will not be a detriment to their property values. We have heard a lot of issues that they would like for us to address, and we're ready to agree to many of those. First of all, the fence that has been discussed, we're ready to commit to that perimeter fence that abuts all the residential. If they don't like the black-coated chain link, we are ready to commit to a privacy fence. Also, the utilities have been mentioned. We have a 15-inch sewer line in front of this property, and a 12-inch water line, so we have very adequate utilities to serve this development. The drainage has been mentioned as a problem, or a potential problem. This development, unlike the condominium project, is going to provide a detention pond in front before our stormwater reaches the big ditch, and it will address not only the stormwater quantity, but also the stormwater quality. We have already agreed to reduce one of our buildings from a three-story building to a two-story building. That is the building that is directly behind the clubhouse, so it will enhance what you see from Old Last Cassas Highway, and as you're driving into this project. That was one of the main considerations in our design. What are you going to see from New Last Cassas Highway? And we think our design provides a very aesthetically pleasing project from that vantage point. One thing I think we need to do, that we haven't done, I think we need to do a photometric plan to show that our lighting will not spill over into the adjacent neighborhoods. I think that's a very valid concern that we need to address. In the neighborhood meeting, we were asked to put a berm along the front of our fence where you drive into the property. It wasn't mentioned tonight, but if that's still something that the residents want to do, we are ready to commit to that. Now, one thing you hear on this project is the same thing you heard when we came here three or four years ago, and that is traffic. Traffic is perceived as a tremendous problem out at this location, especially from the currents that live, from the current residents that live in Garrison Cove. They perceive that they have a tough time getting out of their subdivision in the morning, and there is some delay there. If you recall, back in, three or four years ago, we observed that delay to actually be very minimal compared to levels of service when you look at traffic standards. Now, since the neighborhood meeting that we had, we went out and counted the traffic again out on Garrison Cove, as well as on State Route 96. We have found that the traffic coming out of Garrison Cove is no greater now than it was three or four years ago. And you would expect that, because there really isn't much more development at that location. And if they do have a problem, as mentioned before, they now have Higgins Lane, where a signal is provided at Rutherford Boulevard. What was interesting to me, excuse me, is to be provided at Rutherford Boulevard when it is warranted. And that's something that we negotiated when we worked on the Kroger Shopping Center. Now, what is interesting, and we found here in our recent traffic counts, is that the traffic out on Last Cassas Highway is not increasing either. We found that in the morning, the peak-hour traffic counts are the same as they were three or four years ago. In the evening, however, the traffic is a little greater, it's less than 10%, and I believe that's probably because of the Kroger Shopping Center and for the additional schools in that area. What I think we need to do, there's one thing that Garrison Cove people have said all along, they would love to have a signal at their location. I think we owe the traffic signal warrant analysis at this time for that location, and now we'll consider the traffic that our shopping, excuse me, our apartment complex will generate. I don't believe we will still meet an eight-hour signal warrant. I think we could meet a four-hour signal warrant, and there's some question whether the city and/or the state will allow us to put a signal out there based on a four-hour warrant. But I think we need to do the official warrant analysis to explore that possibility and determine if that can be done. Having said that, we, as the development team, would like to request that we defer our project at this time, and we'll go back and do that study, and also do the photometric plan. And when those studies are done, we'll meet with staff, see what they think is appropriate, and then we'll come back to you.
Okay. Sorry, we cannot take any more questions. Sorry. Planning Commission members, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Questions from members of the Planning Commission, from Mr. Huddleston or the development team?
Sir, your comments are out of order, please.
Mr. Aitlott, do you have comments?
First of all, Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission, I listened real carefully for questions, and I heard very, very few questions. I think that the, for the most part, the people in attendance tonight know what the application is, and they spoke what they thought. So I didn't hear any questions that need to be answered. So I'm here to answer your questions, if you have any of me.
Any questions from Mr. Aitlott, or Mr. Huddleston, while he's still at the podium? Mr. Huddleston, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion and questions from members of the Planning Commission?
The approval of the PUD with the 60 condominium, that is part of the approval process of the thing before. The existing PUD now would approve 61 condos.
The existing zoning for the property is for a planning and development zoning that includes 61 condominiums on the very same property that's requested to be changed to allow these apartments. Yes, sir.
I want to make that, that wasn't something, when we say negotiated, we want to make sure that that's, that was what, that was the end result of that. That wasn't something that they think is going to happen that might not happen. That's, that's what's in the PUD today.
That is the current zoning. Yes, sir.
Any other questions from members of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of comments. You know, part of what we do as a Planning Commission is sit up here and listen to each and every person that wants to get up and speak. And we do that every time we're up here. That's what we do. And each of you have an opportunity to speak, as the developers have an opportunity to speak. And normally, this is a wonderful crowd, and it was a wonderful crowd up until just a couple of minutes ago. And I think that part of the problem is that you all have been here enough times that you know that we listen to you all first, and then we sit up here and deliberate. And nobody has given us the opportunity to do that up to this point. And I don't appreciate it. But I had problems with this proposal when it came in initially. I have a problem with the 60 units that were there to begin with, and asking to turn that into 240 units. We have a lot of that going on in our city right now, and I think we will continue to have a lot of that going on. We'll have developments, a lot of planned developments that are going to come in and ask for changes. They're not going to be able to do what they asked for originally. And just like, there are a whole lot of us, probably 90% of us in this room, that have been affected by the last few years in our economy. And that doesn't mean that every person in here isn't doing what they have to do to try to make things better for them and their family. So no ill feelings towards what's been asked here tonight by the developers, none at all. And we owe it to them to listen to what they had to say to us, to listen to what they had to offer. The project that they've put together is extremely nice, very nice. They did a great job. But I do not feel it's the right thing for this property at this time, maybe ever. And I'll leave my comment for a minute, in case anybody else has a comment, before I make a motion.
I just want to say, before we go into the voting process, I do appreciate everybody coming tonight. We heard from 16 speakers. I think the speakers are very well-prepared. They presented their points of view very clear, just like I would expect the residents of Garrison Cove and the surrounding areas to do, because we've heard you guys plenty of times in the past. I want to thank you for coming again. The two gentlemen that just got up and left, I regret they had to get up and leave. They didn't give us time to go ahead and deliberate about this matter. And this process that the City of Murphysboro uses with a public hearing at this level, an additional public hearing at the city council level, should the Planning Commission recommend approval, this process works, and it is a very thoughtful process, and it's gone through a lot of years of test. And I've seen it for some 19 years now, Mr. Young, for about 20 years, and we're amazed at how well this process does work, and we're very proud of our city, and I'm very proud of the people who serve them as Commission here, because we're all citizens of the city, just like you are. But I just want to get that out of the way. Any other comments before we ask for a motion? If not, Mr. Jones, do you have a motion?
Well, with all respect to the developers and their request for deferral, I hate to even give the impression that I might want you to go to all that extra work and come back for something. I personally don't feel like this is what we need to be doing with this property and making this change, and I would recommend that we deny the request.
Motion has been made. Is there a second? Motion's made, and seconded. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. The request is... Presuming a few of you may want to go home, I'm going to declare about a five-minute recess. The next item for public hearings tonight is the zoning change request to rezone approximately 53.4 acres from PRD to RS-15, located along Armstrong Valley Road, Cape Travis, South Africa. Ms. Ely?
Thank you again, Chairman Lamb and Planning Commission members. This second and final public hearing this evening is for you to consider rezoning approximately 53.4 acres located east of Armstrong Valley Road from its current PRD, Planned Residential District Zone, to RS-15, Single Family Residential District. The area shaded blue on the map before you. As you can see, the property adjacent to the subject area along its eastern side is on PUD, and that's a planned unit development, which is currently undeveloped and is referred to as the Indigo Plan Development. To the north, the few parcels between the subject property and the green line to the north are in an unincorporated area of Rutherford County. Just north of those three parcels are some undeveloped properties that are zoned PUD and PRD. The properties to the west, south, west and south are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from PRD to RS-15. The current PRD zone allows 165 detached condominium units with a density of 3.09 dwelling units per acre, and provides various amenities and a commitment to medium-level house design. The development is designed, the current PRD development is targeted to be designed for the active adult and restricts ownership to buyers of at least 55 years of age. The request is to rezone this property to RS-15. Our RS-15 zone allows single-family residential uses by rights with a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet per lot. If the property were rezoned to RS-15, and subsequently they wanted to be divided into smaller lots, a preliminary plat and a final plat would have to come before Planning Commission and get approval from you to divide this into smaller lots. If the property owners wanted to sell them, and as they are now, then there would be no subdivision plat required to be submitted. So apparently, this property is a victim of the current economic conditions, and they no longer have, feel they have the ability to market or sell it as proposed under the current PRD. So they're requesting the largest lot, largest minimum lot size in residential zone that we have in our zoning ordinance, which is the RS-15 zone. Mr. Larry Sims is here this evening. If you have any questions regarding their request, he does not have a presentation prepared, but if at any time you'd like some additional information, I'm sure he'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have or provide additional information. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing before formulating a recommendation to send to council. If you have any questions at this time, refer to the public hearing, I'll be glad to answer them. I did also include in your packets an ortho photo of the site, and it's on the screen at this time, if you would like for people at home to be able to see what the property looks like.
Mr. Young?
Ms. Ely, did you say Mr. Sims did not have a presentation tonight?
Let me confirm that with him. Do you have a presentation?
I was so looking forward to that. Okay, I understand. Thank you.
He's trying to get it approved. Mr. Smith, I want to thank you for not speaking tonight. If there are no other questions, Mr. Young, I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Quite a difference from a few minutes. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any additional questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission?
One last question, Mr. Lamb. Ms. Ely, this is a down zoning.
Yes, sir. That's...
Going back to RS-15, single-family development.
That's right. It decreases the number of units that would be allowed. Typically, on this size, and not considering the wetlands, you could get 100 single-family lots. And of course, the current zoning would allow 165, so you can see that there are less units that would be permitted.
Thank you, ma'am.
Still have the questions? We're ready for a motion.
Chairman Lamb, I make the motion that we approve.
Say.
All in favor indicate the same aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Sims. Maybe you learned something tonight about presentations, huh? We'll move on into our plans and plans portion of our agenda tonight. We'll move on into our plans and plans portion of our agenda tonight. We have one item under that, that being North Church LLC, Section 4, Lots 1 and 2, a final plat for two lots, 5.66 acres, it's on Commercial Highway, GDO-1, GDO-2, Battlefield Protection Overlay, Mr. C.M. Gaddon Trustee, and Tommy Smith, our helpers. Ms. Logan, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. I realize this is the exciting portion of your agenda tonight, so I'm sure you're looking forward to this plat. But this is a subdivision plat for you located at the Medical Center Parkway-Gresham Park Drive intersection. You have reviewed the preliminary plat on this, on this property, and if we could go to the screen, I wanted to show you and explain to you, there's been a slight change since your agenda was printed before Thanksgiving and went out to you. Originally, this plat was going to be for both Lots 1 and 2. One was the lot that lies in between the Chamber of Commerce site, which is almost at completion, if you've been out there lately, and this property here, which is the corner property there at the intersection. The developers have informed staff that they plan on submitting a site plan for initial design review tomorrow. Tomorrow is the deadline for our next meeting, and would like to consider this as an integrated site plan subdivision, which is a concept that is now found in our subdivision regulations that were adopted last year. And this would be a situation where a site plan would be done in conjunction with the subdivision plat, and the improvements would be done as part of that site plan. If you will recall, under our new subdivision regulations, all improvements must be installed prior to the signing of a plat, with the exception of a binder or except, with an exception of top coat of asphalt, but unless there's an integrated site plan approach, and that's the approach they're wanting to take. Since they have no site plan at this time or plans for development for the lot that lies between this lot and the chamber, they have removed that parcel from the plat and have shown it as future development. So really, it's just now a one-lot plat instead of a two-lot plat, but I wanted to explain to you the difference and why that Lot 1 is not being shown. This property is zoned Commercial Highway. I want to make sure that we get the zoning out there because there's a lot of zoning line changes in this area. The property that is under consideration that shows future development also has properties zoned OG, Office General. In addition, this property that is considered Lot 2 tonight has GDO-1 and GDO-2 overlay on top of it. It will have to conform with the stricter of the two, which is GDO-2. The future development property that sits to the, that sits between this lot and Wilkinson Pike has GDO-2 overlay on it as well as Battlefield Protection Overlay. It also will have to conform with the strictest of the overlay zones and all those requirements when it comes through for development. But because there's a lot of different zoning lines in this area, I just wanted to clarify that, that, so in case there's any questions out there. Otherwise, this property is in good order. There may be a slight change to that access easement that they're showing currently on Lot 2, because that could change depending on the development plans that we've yet to see or approve. Other than that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we work out the question of who's constructing the, what they call the patios?
The plaza for this, for the corner of Medical Center Parkway and Gresham Park Drive will be required to be installed by the developer or the site plan developer of this lot, Number 2. They will be installed, just installed their corner, just like First Tennessee across the street.
Are there any other questions? We studied this plat at our work session previously, so... Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Logan.
Thank you.
Now we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval, second, all standing.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Move on to new business. We have one item under new business this evening. That's a zoning change request to amend the Reserve at Dill Lane PRD, 17.81 acres, and rename said subdivision, said development to Richland Falls located along Dill Lane. Jim Reynolds, South Africa. Ms. Ely.
Good evening. Thank you again. This item is coming before you because the applicants are requesting to amend their PRD zone, their Planned Residential District Zone, as you know. With a PRD, there's a specific plan that's submitted and adopted, and any major changes would require you to approve those changes. So the purpose of it being before you this evening is for you to schedule a public hearing on the item, but I would like to briefly introduce the item, and then I believe Mr. Taylor would also like to go through just some specifics about the project, although he will keep his comments very brief. The property is shaded blue on the map that you have. It's located along the western side of Dill Lane, just south of John Bragg Highway. The property, as I mentioned before, is zoned PRD, Planned Residential District, and the current PRD zone allows 260 dwelling unit apartment community with 14 three-story apartment buildings. The proposed change is to have a maximum of 276 dwelling units, so it would be an increase from 260 to 276 units, which is a modest increase in overall density. And then, rather than having 14 three-story apartment buildings, the proposed change would have 11 three-story buildings and five two-story buildings with garage units beneath the apartments. The properties to the south and to the west are zoned RS-10 and are a part of developed single-family city subdivisions. Just across Dill Lane, it's property zoned PCD, and it's the location of Tractor Supply Company. To the north along Dill Lane, there are two single-family houses, and then just north of those single-family houses is a new bank built on the corner of John Bragg Highway and Dill Lane. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have about this. Mr. Taylor would like to come up at this time and give you a brief introduction, after which, if you feel it's appropriate, we can schedule this for a public hearing.
I've got a couple of bores I want to cut out. Ms. Ely stole most of my thunder. I was going to go over most of the changes real quickly. We are wanting to add, make an increase of 16 units. Those, in addition, we'd like to increase or change the number of bedroom, bedroom mix. We're increasing the number of two bedrooms and decreasing the number of one bedrooms as well. We're completely eliminating any four bedrooms on site. There was about 20 four-bedroom units previously. Now we're getting rid of all those and introducing a small number of three-bedroom units. In addition, we are adding garages to the plan. Most of those are with the two-story buildings, which are colored in orange in your site plan packet. We, in the middle of project, in building Number 11 and 12, those are three stories, and on the back of those, in between the two buildings, those will have garages on the first floor of those as well. And we also have a small number of standalone garages near the detention pond as well. We have concentrated our two-story buildings near the existing residences in the southwest or lower left-hand corner, as you're looking at the site plan. Done that consciously, trying to minimize the effect on the existing neighbors there. One of the big changes between this plan and the previously approved plan is the target market. Both are apartment-style developments. The Reserve at Dill Lane was a student housing market, wanted to target those students at MTSU, try to lure them in. This one is geared more, is envisioned as a Class A development. Want to capture a broad range of people that are looking for a highly desirable living quarters, well landscaped development, high-quality amenities without the burden of the maintenance that comes along with those items. We still want to provide a, what we feel is a more attractive building itself. Your packets themselves didn't have the color elevations. We now have those, and that was the board I wanted to use. You can see, we have a lot of ins and outs on this building, some nice warm colors. We're using quality materials, stone, hardy siding, going to introduce some cement board shake type siding to this project, using architectural shingles on the rooftops and at the main entry into the hallways where you access the units themselves, be using some standing seam metal roofing at that point. A very attractive building on the three-story as well as the two-story. The two-story is down below there. You see brick or stone up to the first floor and then the hardy siding throughout, trying to change the colors up there as well, try to break those facades up. We have included a kind of conceptual landscape plan in your packets. We want to maintain all the existing vegetation around the fence rows, around the perimeter of the property, just like in the previous plan. We'll supplement that where it's kind of, where it gets a little bare in places, and we're also going to make sure the buildings are well landscaped around the foundation, try to help accent the nice architecture we're providing. Outside of that, I'm accompanied by Mr. John Harney, as well as Mike Mugridge and Daniel Hathaway, who will be building this project, or would build the project if it's approved. We're all available to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions?
This was approved basically three years ago, is that right?
I believe it was about two.
Two and a half. The reason I'm, I want you to refresh my memory on this. Mr. Adebah, or man. It seems to me this plan is a better plan than the one before.
Mr. Young, I'm glad to address that. It's my belief that it is a better plan. The previous plan was for student housing. The buildings had a hohum architecture. They, we, we, it was, it wasn't a bad plan, but it was hohum to some extent. I'm very impressed with the quality of this development. The developer has come in, laid out his vision, and I think it is very appropriate. It'd be an upgrade from what we were seeing in the original plan, and I think that this is a good direction to be moving.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What do we need to do, Mr.? Is this?
We need to set a public hearing.
I'm sorry.
We need to set it for a public hearing. Will it be ready for January 5th, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, it will be.
We're ready for a motion.
Maybe we set a public hearing January 5th.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, ma'am. That concludes the new business portion of our agenda. Move on to staff reports and other business. Mr. Adebah?
Very briefly, I want to report to the Planning Commission that all members of the Planning Commission and all members of your professional staff have obtained their required education credits for this year. With January, we'll begin again to work on our education credits, and we'll provide to you numerous opportunities to achieve those.
Want to thank Mr. Lewis for diligently working with members of the Planning Commission to assure we met that goal, so thank you very much, Mr. Lewis. Know the business, Mr. Adebah?
That's all I have.
If there's none, we stand adjourned.